Meeting the order. I'll meet the order on Monday, April twenty seventh at seven oh four P M. Regular council, regular meeting of council. And. Land acknowledgement here, we acknowledge that we are on Treaty Five territory. The city of Thompson is located on ancestral lands in the situation that Cree Nation. We respect the spirit and intent of treaties and treaty making. And remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations, Inuit and Métis people in spirit of true reconciliation and collaboration. I'd like to acknowledge we have the Council of Valentino and Councillors Oberdorfer on Zoom. And councillor, or sorry, Mayor Spook was in Toronto as an indigenous convention. Councillor. Lumber is away. So we have an approval of the agenda, please.
Chair, I'd like to submit the written motion received by pilot two oh four seven twenty twenty five. To you, so we can discuss that for the next.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Uh, okay, approval of the agenda. Councillor McTire, Councillor Shaw. Hey. Adoption of the minutes. Um. Conditional use. Number Resolution two zero two five zero six three. Be resolved at the minutes of the public hearing, conditional use number. Zero one dash two five, the local chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, April tenth, twenty twenty five, be adopted as circulated. Administration.
Just need a mover in this second.
Oh, sorry, moved by councillor Wong and seconded by councillor Chong. Administration. Nothing further, Mr. Wong. All those in favor? Eric. Resolution two zero two five zero six four. Be resolved at the minutes of the regular meeting of councilman, Helen City Council Chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, Monday, April tenth, twenty twenty five, be adopted as circulated. Uh, moved by councillor. Diver and seconded by councillor Chong. Station. Nothing further, councillor, all those in favor? Eric. Resolution two zero two five zero six five, be resolved. That the minutes of the committee of the whole of City Council, held in the council chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, and Man. On Monday, April twenty first, twenty twenty five, be adopted as circulated. Moved by councillor McTire, seconded by councillor Chong. Administration. All those. Councillor McTire. All those in favor? Great. By resolution. Resolution two zero two five zero six six, moved by councillor Wong, seconded by councillor Chong. Whereas on March fourteenth, twenty twenty two, council passed resolution. Number two zero two two zero four seven, approving. Patulation of prices for the road renewal design of to ACOM. For total contract of one nine six hundred seventy two thousand one hundred sixty six dollars. As per tender file number ten zero. One zero three two two. And whereas ACOM has submitted changes, change order number eleven. For reconstruction of Princeton Drive and Station Road. Princeton Drive roadway realignment and preliminary design plans. Now therefore be resolved that City Council. Approved the additional contract change order number eleven to the scope of work for the investing in Canada infrastructure. Program, ISIP Roads. R N C I S ten twenty seven, project number six zero six eight one two seven seven. For the amount of twenty six thousand six hundred thirty eight dollars. Administration.
Yeah, good evening. As we discussed with the committee hall last week, we have this change order from us. Um, when the original road interior contract entered back in the twenty twenty two. Uh, they believe the time was all over roads were in a condition where we could be more filling. Uh, which is a lot less designed, a lot less every year. Unfortunately, after the geotech and survey requirements, including the taking of core samples throughout the roads. Uh, as we have with previous years, our roads that are up for this year are a mission that merely filled not be possible. And we have to do reconstruction. So that is, uh, that is the bulk of the cost is to do the design and engineering and engineering work. For Princeton Drive Station Road to go from a milling fill to a reconstruction. The second part of order was some early works that had to get done regarding the, uh, the addition of a multi-use pathway. They referred with the A T path in their report to add a multi-use pathway to Princeton Drive. Uh, to replace the sidewalk and add the A Ts. Uh, so there was some design work there as well as some early work with elevations. To align our water project to go ahead. So that we put our hybrids in for our water project, the hybrids aren't either in the multi-use pathway or or in the roadway. So the, the sum of the two changes, uh, as per the, uh, the discussion, uh, the sum of these two changes, twenty six thousand three hundred and thirty, sorry, six hundred and thirty eight dollars. Of which, uh, our portion is, uh, sixteen point six seven percent on the roadway. So that, uh, sorry, I can't give it a task if I know the, uh, portions, four thousand something that it is. So I ask you for a quick explain.
Wong. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, sorry, I wasn't here before the last meeting, but I, I do have a couple of question to. Administration. Understand this, this, this price is for redesign. Top of the road because of no longer enough material for building, right? So I assume this fee is for them to, to redesign the curve. To certain, uh, type to able to redo the, uh, the construction of. Is it, am I right?
Yeah, well, it's the redesign, it's the whole road and everything.
So. So the, the rate is already involved into it. So may I ask this question? So instead of reconstruction, the, the whole entire road from Princeton Drive and Station Road. And we, and we ask them to add. Whatever material we can, we can salvage from the existing. Uh, material and add because the, the curb is already designed up to the, with the standard. So now because of the materials not enough to fill. So if we just add, will it be way cheaper than reconstruction of the whole entire thing? Can you find out what is with that?
So just two notes of that is. As per my discussion in the previous months. We're doing similar exercise on Princeton, as we are in Westwood, we're narrowing it down, which means the curves in the existing locations won't work. We actually have to remove all the curves and put all new curves in.
Um, so which this is involving, right?
Which this is involved, and then the second point with three, I think you had a, had a point around, uh, salvaging the material in place. Uh. Yes, every effort is made, uh, as was done in the past years. That they bring up, uh, a, a rotor mill machine, which, which in essence goes through the pavement, through the asphalt. And drops a granular material behind the machine that can be either packed in places filled, which then saves us having to purchase fill and transport fill in. Or if it's surplus material, which we have in the past, we actually removed it from the roadway and use it somewhere else. But we've got a stockpile of it from the previous years of work. It can be either used as fill, uh, in a compacted base underneath a new road going in. It can be used as a base below our, our active tread or our multi-use pathways. So again, there is a cost saving there instead of having to add, sorry, separate by aggregate. We're able to reuse the road material and that, that's included in what they do in design, every effort is made to reuse the road material.
Perhaps I, I, I agree on one of the reason. But somehow I'm worried about. We can basically, ever since we got the ISAP project, uh, funding. Every time, every year when we try to do something, we always see this extra, extra, extra community. So what I worry about is the money will not last long. So if we can see somewhat somewhere. So at the end of the day, let's say we have some surplus from the ISAP funding. Which is a plus for seeing, so we can use that extra to do more of this, that's my whole intention. Whether you use it for, for, for multi-use path or use it for backfill. Whatever way that the administration feel more fit, need to be fit, I'm okay with that. But I just want to remind that, make sure that we are doing that, that way we are not, we are not throwing away the good money, which is weak and long. Make it longer, a bit, uh, uh, further. That would be great in my, in my, in my view.
I, I can take that back to the designers. But at the next committee, the whole meeting, again, all of our country reports, the amount spent and where we are to pay, so we can have a chat with that.
All right, yeah, thank you, Deputy Chair.
Thank you.
Councillor Chong, thank you, Chair. Uh, the question I want to ask is, when you talk about station roof. Are they, are you could mention the whole station roof from the. Cross section. From the duty center all the way up to the train station?
So, so the part we're doing is from the Princeton Road Station intersection. All the way to the corner of Tree Line, which is down by the train station. So we're, we're Princeton Intermodal Station, all the way down across the railroad track. And then around the curve to the corner at, uh, Tree Water.
The Tree Line?
Yes, to that, to that corner.
Not all the way to the train station?
No, no, just in the corner.
Okay, further to that. When you go up the hill down there close to the senior home. And there's a, every time it's rain or snow now, there's a big water puddle down there, can we eliminate that?
Yes.
Like the elevation?
Yep, that'll be absolutely eliminated with the design. Again, just a reminder, when we, when they, these roads are designed, they have a crown built into the roads. To shed the water off the roads again to prevent this cooling.
Right.
We've actually increased our crown from two to three percent again, with climate change and activities like that, to allow that water to shed off the road faster. So yes, with the design and executed, there will be a puddle anymore. But we're also looking to ensure that the rail crossing, where it crosses, um. Uh, where the rail line crosses there, that's built to a proper specifications, we're not having issues with, uh. Uh, vehicles, bottoming, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councillor Oberdorfer.
Thank you. Uh, my question's related to the construction budget, so. Um, the amount that's been presented to us for the change order is related to the design fee. So do we know the implications to the construction budget? And I think that was kind of mentioned with councillor, uh, Wong's comments regarding like the overall construction budget and if that'll affect. Um, sort of having to scale back any work at the end of the project, but I'm just curious if we know the, um, the financial implications for the construction portion at all. Um, related to the design changes and then, um, if you could clarify which section of Thompson Drive, I'm assuming based on the, the meters. In the memo that I, it's the section like by the super eight and the co-op, just because there's from links to Cree Road. There's technically two sections of Thompson Drive between links and Cree Road. Um, so I'm assuming it's a shorter section, but I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
So with regards to your first question, we don't have the full part, we don't have that full, uh, impact debt councillor, because it hasn't gone out to tender yet, so we don't have those. This is twenty twenty. Six work. Right, they're designing now for twenty twenty six. Um, you know, I, I can say that we've had to do this already with a number of the streets that we've already done. And we are over fifty percent of our roads done, so I think we're at. Ten point. One or ten point two kilometers or twenty kilometers requirement. And we are less than fifty percent spent. So. We are, you know, if you look at a project budget, know where you are for, for spend and where you are with project completion, should be or not it. With us spending less than where we are, uh, that. Requirement to have to reconstruct roads work versus milling fill has not really. Impacted us yet, but I get your question councillor, that's something we will monitor. With regards to your second question, uh, the section of Thompson Drive we're referring to is not towards a super eight, it's the other way. It's the, from where we've ended at links. Thompson Drive going in front of the high school, the school board office, the giant tiger, then around the Cree Road at the Kentucky Fried Chicken. That's the section that we get to do, that's in future years. So that's the section of. Links to Cree that's being referenced, and that's part of future designs. That was part of the original road set.
Councillor Shaw?
Yes, I, I said, uh, this, uh, I'm gonna watch you just mention, so just out of the space. You had mentioned that only fifty percent. Of the projected work have been completed.
More than fifty percent.
Yes, you still about fifty, fifty five percent.
Well, we're at ten, we're at ten point one to longer than twenty, just over fifty percent.
Sure, and, um, we are slightly under fifty percent.
I believe it's forty six percent spent, but I'll have the more up to date numbers that next thing we have a hold.
Okay, so I'm going to assume that we're roughly five percent, roughly a hundred percent. So four, four percent, five percent. Oh, okay, good, yeah, that's what I'm saying, thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you, everybody. Uh, so all those in favor? Thank you. Resolution two zero two five zero six seven, moved by councillor Wong, seconded by councillor Chong. Whereas the city has received the land lease, the application from Royal Lima. For part, for part lot one and part lot two, plan number seven six zero two. B L T O North Division. And whereas the lease term is for fifteen years at an annual rent of five thousand thirty six dollars. Plus GST in accordance with the city's current fee and fine schedule. Now therefore be resolved that City Council approved the land lease agreement between the city. Of Thompson and Royal Lima for part lot one and part lot two. Plan number seven six zero two B L T North Division. Administration?
Yeah, so good evening again, uh, so again, we were, this, this was discussed with committee last week, this is kind of a part one of a part two type of a thing. Uh, this individual is interested in, 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 in taking over the lease, it is an existing lease. Uh, there are buildings on the property. So the, the current, uh, current, uh, we see is selling those buildings. Uh, so this individual is interested in buying the buildings and therefore we take away the lease. Furthermore, they have, uh, they are interested in actually buying the land, which is the next motion. Uh, so this is, this is part one to approve the lease, uh, going forward at the prescribed rate under our fees and fines.
Thank you. Councillor Wong.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, uh. I kind of, again, I, I, I think. I wasn't here for the last meeting, so I have a question, if you have mind. Uh, looks like this, this resolution is kind of related to the next, yes. My question is, why this person want to enter lease instead of go straight and purchase that way? We don't need to, uh, uh, this, I'm missing something, something in the issue, station.
Yeah, unfortunately, this, the, as, as was said in the resolution, it's part one of and part two of a separate lots. This isn't one unique title. It's part of a larger title, so we actually have to do a subdivision and reserving that separate lot. So there is a title for that property owner. And until we have a title for that property, we can't sell the land. So that's why we have to do the lease, the cost of the service we'll talk later is borne by the city, uh, to, to get it done. Uh, and hopefully if you do it sooner than later, then the lease will cease to exist and it will be done as a land sale. Unfortunately, that's, that's why it has to be done this way, also.
That, that makes sense, thank you.
But Alex. Yeah. Well, councillor Valentino?
Uh, thanks Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I'm fine with this and I appreciate how we, administration went back and quickly got this resolved with what are. I guess what we asked for is council with the dollar amounts and making this work, so. I appreciate the, the kind of quick turnaround on this and I'm definitely going to be supporting it as now it follows the, the direction that council wanted to see this move, so thank you.
Yeah. But Alex. Hey, all those in favor? Eric. Eighty five point three, resolution two zero two five zero six eight. Moved by councillor Chong. Seconded by councillor McTire. Whereas the city is in receipt of an option to purchase. Application for city-owned property described as roll number three sixty four point zero zero zero. Consisting of approximately a hundred twenty thousand square feet. And whereas the application includes an offer to purchase the land for fifty thousand dollars plus GST. And where subdivision of the property is required prior. Finalizing the sale to be managed and paid for by the city. Now therefore be resolved that council approved the option to purchase application. For city-owned property described as roll number three six four point zero zero zero. Consisting of approximately a hundred twenty thousand square feet and a thousand fifty thousand dollars plus GST. Administration?
Yeah, so good evening again, yeah, so this is the kind of the other part of this. Uh, as per the response to councillor Wong's question, the reason we have to do a lease first before this is, we actually have to do a subdivision survey. Uh, submit a subdivision to the province, if I'm else, I can buy it to the title for this property. Uh, this option is a, is, we put it in for a two-year option. Uh, we feel, uh. Confident that we can get the subdivision all completed in two years, there is not, there is a. Stipulation that we need to go to the third year of the option, which can't. So really what this does is it just holds the land, allows us to get the survey done, the survey done. And ensures that, you know, we can't sell this to anybody else while we're in that, that process.
Yeah. Councillor Chong. Uh, no worries. Hey, yeah, councillor Wong.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So. My question is, so you said the survey need to redo the alignment, right?
Yeah, there is the survey, the lines that exist on the map right now, that the little blue that's in your package. That is arbitrary lines that were, that were, uh, assigned by the assessments branch, who assign a roll number two. But it, it has no legal standing in the land titles office. So basically, this is the map that the survey, the surveyors will use to try and lay it down and, and compare it, figure out. So the lines at the end of the day may not be exactly where the title line, or where, sorry, where the roll number lines are, but they'll be in close proximity.
So may I, may I say this? The blue color is the one that you estimate about twelve. Hundred thousand square.
Hundred, hundred and twenty thousand.
Hundred and twenty seven. Hundred and twenty thousand square feet. So let's say the survey come back, it's a different maybe straight up and three mile corners. Corner and all this, is that would be possible? I cannot see less because the building is sitting on one of them, so.
Yeah, I.
That's, that's one of the, the, the concern I have, let's say they come back with more land, become a straight line. So the twelve thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand square feet will no longer apply to this agreement. And the price would be. Right now it's already. Forty one cents a square feet based on the information we have. So what I'm saying, like, if we entered agreement. At the end, it's not aligned with what we are, we are. Is that really a problem? That's the only concern I have, based on information. So how are we going to make it like the, let's say that is something.
So I can't give a hundred percent answer on that councillor, I did talk to the survey company, they have about the map in front of us, or they have, this map was circulated to them. Uh, through my conversations with them, like. They did not raise, uh, nor give any concern to think that the property wouldn't. Or the survey would match this. They actually did have one question on property access to the. Let's call it the southern property, because there's no road access on this airform. However, if anyone's driven the road, they know that there is a second road that's been added to that southern, uh, property. That, that is not illustrated on these airforms, so, uh. Again. Through conversations with the surveyors, I, I can't see a sort of, I don't have an answer, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not trying to argue with the survey company a lot, but when you look at the map. You make no sense at the back part of the portion. So how, how we going to sell the other part in the back? So usually we're going to line up with the building, square it up. To, to draw a line. But now this part is hard for it to sell, let's say we have another potential buyer with a spider and land right beside it, it's awkward. Right, we make it so many corner and awkward. So to do a right thing at one time, do the right in the first time, it's better to straight all the way to the end. So now they have a bigger piece and then the second lot, if you want to sell, will be straight line instead of. That's why I, I tried to make it. The argument. Yeah, I, I know. But I just tried to bring this up, the concern, so hopefully you can look at it anyway.
Hey, councillor Valentino?
Uh, thanks Deputy Mayor, so. I'm supporting this, um, when we work with the surveying company and there's conversations and they've, uh, looked at all this and. Administration has been working with them, that's their profession if this hasn't been, if there's no red flags. When the planning district has gone to, through this and, uh, reviewed it and the province has approved it. And council has discussed it in the past and we've brought it forward now, then I'm not willing to hold up. This sale or this possible growth or economic growth or business opportunity, um, to what if it? So I'm supporting this, um, and I think we've done our due diligence to get to this point tonight, thank you.
Councillor Wong.
Thank you, uh, that's exactly, I turned it to due diligence. Because I see there's a problem down the road. I did not mention about, I do not trust the professionalism. What I'm saying, what I see based on my experience of buying land. This is not the way it's supposed to be. Plus, I seen enough of this, so I don't want to down the road because this problem. That's exactly what I'm trying to do. Thank you.
Dear Councillor Shaw.
Thank you, I, I think this all speaks to the need for us to do that. Over top or having a, a more proactive, uh, plan alter for this area. And believe the administration working on that, um. One quick question in regards to, to the timeline, uh, how long it was to get that?
Yeah, the subdivision process, uh, you know, because it's, uh, uh, there is a provincial process. And the experience of twelve to eighteen months. Again, depending on the time of the season and the ability of the surveyors to get in there, so. That's why I said the two-year option, I didn't feel confident, but, you know. For two years, we should be able to just put it under that two years ago, all done. Again, that's been explained to, uh, the applicants, uh, a number of times now. It's, it's comfortable with that.
Yeah. Further. Right? All those in favor? Eric.
It's a very good.
Anybody opposed to this? Two zero two five zero six nine. Moved by councillor Wong, seconded by councillor Chong. Whereas the city of Thompson is interested in supporting local businesses and growing the community through targeted immigration. And whereas the Thompson Chamber of Commerce and multiple local, large, medium and small businesses. Have expressed their desire and support for a Thompson-specific targeted immigration program. Now therefore be resolved, the city of Thompson commits to participating in the Thompson Immigration Committee. And partnering with the province of Manitoba to create and execute a strategy to attract skilled immigrants to the city of Thompson. And the Thompson region. Assist local employers to build vacant positions and to encourage growth in the region. Administration. Councillor Wong.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I appreciate that we can come to this agreement and I would fully support this, thank you.
Councillor Shaw?
Yeah, thank you, I'm, um, I do want to thank, uh, administration, I know this thing been. Have the, the, a few times. Uh, this is a very important. This is a very important resolution I got, I thought this, this is more uh from a business owner. Who spoke to us this very same thing. It's a big need right now. Uh. And then uh. I guess your only question. I don't ask these, uh, you saw, I'll go along, but I just want to say that we support it. It's a very tiny need, because it's. Really big need, but uh. I just want us to. Get away of the system, it's been talked about before, boss.
Yeah, Councilor Valentino?
Uh thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to be supporting this. I know we've been talking to about this for a bit and. I I like that the resolution is um a little bit broader, where it's just. Telling us that the city of Thompson is committing to participating right now. We aren't. Actually the ones that are are taking the lead, but we're going to be a participant in the committee and I, I think that was a little bit of um. Not, was a little bit worrisome because it's just not one more thing we can be the lead on, but we can be a part of the committee, so I appreciate the warning. In the uh resolution and the other note I would make in in that lock letter to the minister is that I, on the CC'd. Um organizations to the minister, I would suggest that we have the school district in Mystery Lake and. UCN also included to have copies sent to them. As uh they also have vacant positions and right now. Uh the education part starts to recruit for September, so those would be the ones that I would also suggest we have CC'd. Thank you, I'll be supporting it.
Yep. Any else? All those in favor? Mary? It's been proclamation here. Okay, so a mayor's proclamation from the office of mayor. Whereas the city of Thompson recognized the resilience of indigenous peoples, including First Nations, Inuit and Maiti survivors. Impact of government policies such as the sixty scoop. Millennium scoop, birth alerts, and other systems that separated children from their families. And whereas the blanket is a sacred symbol in many indigenous cultures. Representing healing, protection and belonging. And the blanket ceremony offers a way to honor survivors with dignity and care. And whereas this day provides an opportunity for reflection, education and community healing. Acknowledging a distinct chapter in Canada's colonial history that continues to affect indigenous families today. And whereas this observance aligns with the city of Thompson's commitment to reconciliation, inclusion. And the principles of the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. Uh thereby. Therefore, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as. Deputy Mayor of Thompson, city of Thompson. Reclaims June thirtieth as Indigenous Survivors' Day, National Glative Day Ceremony Day. In recognition of the strength of survivors and its step towards truth, healing and reconciliation. We have a mayor colleagues. Eighteen months, that's been told in May. Twenty-fifth of April, twenty twenty-five. It's all for a German. Councilor McCadrick, Councilor Chong, all those in favor? Mary? Everybody?